I'm going to call this regular council meeting to order here on March 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Here in City Hall. We have additions to the agenda. I would like to have a motion to... For a letter of resignation to be read to council. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Somebody, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Four oh. I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to read this resignation letter into the minutes. It's dated March 19th, 2019. Dear Council President, I regret to inform you that I must resign the office of mayor. I am no longer able to fulfill my duties, and I feel it is the best interest of the city to step down. I wish to keep the reasoning for stepping down to myself. I will note, for the record, that it is due to health concerns and personal matters. I would like to wish you all the best of luck, and give my best to the community as well. I tender my resignation effective immediately. Thank you, Dakota S. Tucker. Additions to the agenda. Land bank discussion. Ten-minute executive session for the land bank discussion. Ordinance 1061-19, enhanced cereal malt beverage. Ordinance 1062-19, illegal dumping. Any additions to the agenda?
You probably ought to have put "accepting that resignation" on there.
Have that resignation letter accepted by council. Do I have any...
We probably need to talk about what happens then. We can do that after the meeting, or we can do that at that time.
Talk about that?
What happens after you accept that resignation?
So we do need to do that in an open session?
Oh, yeah.
So we need to add that to the agenda, you just said?
Right, I mean, that's fine. If you say it's the agenda.
Okay.
We're talking about additions to the agenda, right?
Yeah, I just added that to it, so...
Do we need to add something under you to take care of that?
We'll just talk about it at that time.
So just, we just need it in a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
For the agenda?
The additions? The additions to the agenda, yeah.
Making sure I'm on the same page?
Yep.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All against? Motion carries four oh. John, do we need to discuss the resignation letter, what happens now? Or do you want to move that to the very end?
Just whatever you want to do it. You want to do it under new business?
Uh, yeah, let's take care of that under new business.
I thought you said it was under you.
Actually, why don't you just take care of it under mayor's, or the...
Let's just take care of it now, because what happens is you effectively become mayor. So that we can start this meeting as
Okay.
you as the mayor. So I would go ahead. Somebody needs to make a motion and accept the resignation letter.
I'd make a motion to accept the resignation effective immediately.
Second.
All those in favor? All those against? Motion carries four oh.
Okay, so Mark is now the mayor, which means you need a new council president. At some point, Mayor Bryant's going to have to present council with a list of, or one person, however you want to do it, as mayor, to replace you in open seat. You serve for the length of Dakota's...
Which is the sanest line.
Okay, and I don't remember. I feel like he's only been mayor for a year or so.
Yeah.
So you're at the start, basically, of that time period. But I don't care when it happens during the meeting, but you guys need to pick a new council president.
Well, I've already discussed that with Councilman Sanders, and I'd like to ask him to be president of the council.
I'll do it.
So... So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries three to one.
So you're saying that Mark comes up with the list of people that he'd love to mayor?
No, he doesn't even have to pair a list. He just, the ordinance says that he has to appoint somebody, same as everything else, and then with the consent of council.
So he could pick, and then we approve?
Somebody has to make a motion.
Yeah.
Be the same thing when we put Jim on from the last mayor.
Less controversial, but yeah.
Should have been. I'll have, I'll have a list of names by next council meeting for council to look at. If you have any suggestions, I'm open to suggestions. If you don't have my email, you can get it from Jamie. Should have my phone number. You can text me, call me.
Are you giving me permission to give out your cell phone?
Huh? It's on the website. It's not like it's private information anymore.
Trying to cut the thicker.
Okay, uh, let's see here. All right, moving on. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening?
Yes, please.
Economic Development. Last year, approached you guys about a letter of support for our shared workspace over here in the building where the pharmacy was. And that's when we were applying for a federal grant, similar to what we did with the grocery store. Didn't end up following through with that because we were lacking letters of support from employers, which we needed to make that grant application a-go. So we are currently working on a grant application for USDA. It's not asking for any financial commitment from the city at all. It's basically just your support in the project that we're doing. So the grant application, we are looking to have rural jobs, remote jobs, for individuals out of the incubator space. So we are applying for funds to do some renovations, basic renovations to that building, and then the biggest thing is putting computer equipment in there for individuals to use if they get these jobs. We'll put them through a training program. Honestly, we're targeting the Circles program. Those individuals, really hoping to get them employment if they go through this training. That's the letter that Carolyn and I worked on. If you guys are okay with it, we asked that the mayor sign it. We'll have to edit that. But...
Is that okay to get to you? He comes in in the mornings?
That's fine. The grant application's due next Friday, so if I can have it for sure
Yeah, we can get it.
by the morning would be awesome. But like I said, we're not asking for a financial commitment from the city. It's just...
A support.
Just support.
John, do we have to vote on something like that?
It would be nice, too.
Okay.
Minutes can be reflected, shows.
Without reading all the way through, I can...
I can read it word for word, but I scanned through most of it.
It's basically the same letter that we gave permission for Dakota to sign back. Was it June of last year?
June of last year. And a lot of it aligns with, I know Mark and Sherry were part of that meeting back in 2017 over at the ANX. We had WSU come in.
Oh, yeah.
Some strategic planning, mainly focused on the grocery store development. But out of that, lack of businesses and jobs was one of the main concerns that we got from community members. And then aspirations, keep and grow businesses, the business incubator, and then new and better housing. So I mean, it's kind of aligned with, I feel like, everyone's vision in a way. So job creation is honestly the biggest thing for this.
Absolutely. Okay. I'd like to...
I see no issues with the...
Yeah.
I mean, I'd make a motion to go ahead and sign the letters. That board.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I do.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Carries four oh.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And you'll get this changed right off the top of your head in the morning?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, all right. Do you need this?
No, I have, I have the official wrong favor right here.
Any other citizens' comments? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, March 5th, 2019. Appropriation ordinance number 319-19 in the amount of $16,178.61, and petty cash of $263.99. Any other discussion?
So moved.
I have a motion on the table, a second. I have a motion and a second. Sanders and Christie. All those in... I'm sorry.
Before you vote.
Yes.
In the future, I would suggest you do the minutes in one motion and appropriation the other, because they're two totally different things, and we may have discussion. And if somebody's not in a meeting, you really cannot vote to approve the minutes. It probably should be done separately.
Okay.
And we're probably going to run into that with anything as far as appropriations for like me and Ryan or something, if a business that we're related to.
Right. I will... I'll figure out an easier way to make it flow.
Okay.
We'll just move to accept the minutes and then do the appropriation.
Okay, all right. All right, let's...
I think we can leave it the same for now, the motion that was made then.
Okay, it's fine, okay.
We'll change it in the future.
We'll change it in the future, okay. All right, so four oh. Just a motion. Let me vote on that. Okay. Next, on the agenda, Adams, Brown, Baron, and Ball. Audit delivery.
Stand over here. I'm Danielle Wallenshud. I'm with Adams, Brown, Baron, and Ball. We did your audit this year, and it went really well. I'm going to go through the audit report. I kind of go fast, so if you have any questions, want me to slow down, just tell me. I'm going to start with the bound report, and then I'll go over the letters after that. So if you turn to page 1, 2, and 3... Actually, that's one too. 1 and 2 is our independent auditors' report, and on page 2, and the second and third paragraph is where we are issuing our opinion on the financial statements. That's the most important piece of this audit. We are giving you an unmodified opinion, and that is the highest opinion you can receive. That means your report, we don't believe there's any material in the statements within the audited financial statements. So that is what those paragraphs are stating. We do do your report on regulatory basis, meaning we follow Kansas Municipal Accounting and Auditing Guide. We do not do full accrual basis if any of your business owners have to do financial statements. We follow cash basis. So that is kind of what those two paragraphs are stating. If you turn to page 3, this is a financial statement that we're actually issuing the opinion on. And at the end of the year, you had ending unencumbered cash of 3.2 million. This is an overall cash increase of $415,000 from the prior year. You had encumbrances and accounts payable of $95,000 at the end of the year. The overall cash increase is actually attributed to several of the funds, but the main one, your Water and Light, went up $119,000. And then your Water System Capital Improvement Fund, you went up $52,000. And then the city's sales tax, which went into full effect last year, went up almost $70,000. So that's where a lot of your cash increase is sitting at the end of the year. Any questions on that statement? Okay. The next several pages are the footnote, what we call the footnotes, the financials. This just goes over your guys' accounting policies that you're following currently. We also have to look at compliance and make sure that Kansas statutes are being followed. You didn't have any statute violations, so you won't see anything in there for a statute violation. But I will have you, I'm not going to go through the footnotes for this, like I said, additional info that you probably already aware of because of the policies you're following. But if you turn to page 12, this is our long-term debt. And at the end of the year, you have $946,950 in principal left to pay. And your KDHE loan, which is the one that's the longest, is expected to be matured in 2033. And the next several statements, actually, if you turn to page 13, this is your budget-to-actual expenditure statement. And this compares where you were at at the end of the year per the budget to what you actually spent. We had no budget violations at the end of the year. You still had some budget authority left in most of your funds, which is what we expect to see. And we do do a comparison to the 2019 budget to make sure you're going to be okay for '19, because that can really make a difference. And you're sitting okay to your '19 budget. And then the next several statements are actually just supplementary statements. They go through each one of your funds and what you spent throughout the year. I can go through each fund if you'd like me to. I don't typically unless you want me to. There's nothing, you guys had a pretty quiet year, actually. Maybe you may not say the same, but there's not, there's not huge variances between the prior year and 2018. So there's not anything that kind of jumps off the page on any one of these funds. Do you guys have any questions as to what you can spend in any one fund that you would like me to go over while I'm here?
Something, um, something I spoke with you about when you were here. I would like to maybe get more, and I'll get ahold of you, but just to run it by them, to maybe have her come out, maybe to a meeting, or even set up a special time, so we can just go over, I think you said maybe a couple hours it would take, to just kind of go over some of the budget things and the difference. I mean, it's obviously completely different than our checkbooks at home. So I kind of reached out to her and asked, you know, what it would take. It's, it's not going to be that expensive. I think for what we're getting out of it, it's going to be beneficial for all of us, and so that's something that you guys need to put on your radar, because I want to schedule that. So, if that's okay with everyone?
We did make an adjustment to your funds this year, and I think it's on your... The Equipment Reserve Fund and Capital Improvement Fund are two separate reserve funds, and they have very specific things you can spend out of them. Your Equipment Reserve Fund can only be for equipment. Your Capital Improvement Fund can only be for improvements to capital work projects, or buildings, or streets, things like that. We had it, money going into them just mixed up, so we did, Jamie and Pam went through those, and it grabbed those cleaned up. So you'll see some additional transfers that we had to make to get those cleaned up to the balances that they were supposed to be.
I'm assuming those deal with the fire, police, stuff like that?
Yeah, the way that it, the way that it appears to be set up, it, um... It was my understanding that they were saving for vehicles, which is not allowed with the way they set up the fund. So when they took the money for the police car out of Capital Improvement, it was correct, because you can't buy vehicles out of Fund 50. So what they did was right, but in my mind, it wasn't right, because that's not the money they're saving for. So we'd made that transfer, and then when we went over everything, we had to pull it back out and then pull the money that...
You also cannot transfer from Capital Improvement to just full equipment.
Yes.
So we had to do some back. You guys had enough budget room. We could fix it this year, so that's why we did that.
So we have the funds fixed, and every, the line items in Capital Improvement now, where when we're doing the budget line by line, we'll be able to add in that amount in cap...
Equipment Reserve.
Yeah, Equipment Reserve. So...
The money that was being saved was put into Capital Outlay?
Capital Improvement.
Capital Improvement, yeah.
Which is why it's confusing.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have a thing...
It really needs to be put in a reserved special fund for the police department.
Right.
Twerdy.
Yeah, that's pretty much what it is.
Are you asking about the Go Bond?
No.
Okay.
I was looking at the interest on the Whit Memorial fund.
Okay.
That's probably about what I had.
Isn't, isn't there something, is it our Go Bond that wasn't closed out properly?
It wasn't closed out last, two years, not '18, but '17 when it was budgeted. So we had to leave it in there again this year, because we didn't have budget authority. We have budgeted for it in '19. It will be fixed in '18, and then will be closed out. We, because of that, the way the budget was done, we didn't have enough budget room and the bond and interest to pay your full principal payment this year. So you will see in a general fund that you had to pay some principal out of there for the bond, just because of budget issues.
We're looking at the interest received with...
Those are CDs.
It doesn't show what the total principal and CDs were, but if it's $50,000, it's .238, which is no money at all.
I'll have to defer on that one to Dana. Do you know what your with CDs is?
That's what I've been saying. It's $50,000.
$50,000 is .238, too.
On your paper I just gave you, or...
.33.
I didn't.
150, 150.
Yeah.
.33, 10%.
I was just jumping ahead before I made disgusted.
And maybe when it pays out, too?
Well, that, that, the Whit Memorial has been a hot topic because of the interest and what it's allowed for. So they are looking at those numbers to be able to...
So you can spend it. If you don't have any further questions on the financials, I'll go over the two letters. We have to issue what we call recommendations. I didn't, we didn't have any major recommendations this year. We do have to look at material we can fill. These are things that are very, very significant and need to be addressed right away. Significant deficiencies are just not quite as significant, but they're, they're still things that need to be addressed right away. And then we have a second letter that's just for general comments. Just things that we see as we're out here that we just recommend getting fixed. So the first letter, the only significant thing we have is segregation of duties. And that's not going to, that's not going to change just because of the size of the city. I will say, now with you guys going from 3 to 2, it's just really important that you guys stay active as a board. Make sure you're looking at anything you can look at, just to protect them and to protect yourselves, so. Nothing wrong with going down to 2, just something that internal controls, make sure you stay active. And then the comments are in the governance letter. And it starts on page 2. Like I said, these are pretty minor. They're just internal control recommendations. The first one is physical inventory. We just always recommend natural disaster strikes. Have some sort of listing at the end of the year, once a year. Doesn't necessarily have to be the end of the year, but once a year, maybe they're slower. Kind of go through their equipment, their physical things they have in the shop. Put a list together for insurance purposes. Bank reconciliations and journal entries. They have to be signed off, or we recommend they are signed off, by not only the preparer, but also the reviewer, just to show that two set of eyes are looking at it. And we recommend that council members receive a budget-to-actual expenditure, so that when you're approving appropriations, you're monitoring where they're being paid out of. And then the last one, I think you guys already touched on, just making sure in the minutes that you reflect who the vendor is, who you're paying, and then if it is someone sitting here, that's you about staying firm. And that's all we have.
So they're voting for the whole thing?
Just for their piece. Yeah, they just shouldn't approve themselves.
And I think that Pam and I are going to reach out about the the budget-to-actual expenditure report. She, she included something this month, or this meeting that she had been working on, and then I got some stuff last week in one of my classes that I want to... It's basically just taking the numbers from, and showing them what, how much we need in reserve, just so they can see that number.
With cash.
Yeah, yeah. So we might be reaching out to CDs.
All right, any other questions? Comments?
Oh, yeah.
Does that tax, sales tax number include stuff in the TIP district?
The what?
We don't see the TIP district.
You don't see the TIP district?
It goes straight to the county?
It goes, no, I think it goes straight back to them. I think it's directly paid to...
It doesn't come in here at all?
That's the way I understood it. It just goes straight to the economic...
So you, it's $139,000 plus whatever was made in the TIP district?
Yeah, that TIP district receives that money back to itself against its own...
Okay, well, I didn't know when you got the numbers or anything on that. So you have no idea what the grocery store generates in?
Sales tax.
It's got second up development.
I don't think so.
She knows, because we get the sales tax checks.
Yeah, we do.
But it's, it automatically goes to economic development, or it doesn't run through the city, right?
Every month I go in and obtain the information, and then I give economic development their portion of it.
I just wonder if that number would be a number that the city would want to know
We'd think so.
quarterly or monthly or something, council.
I don't know if I have the ability to give you that number. I'll have to go back through my email.
Okay, and I assume it'd be subject to...
I'm sure you can find it somewhere on the states. But it, it's not included in our 1%. That's what you're asking.
Well, and it's like when the city writes the check for $50,000, it writes annually. I would think you would want to see what else is being brought in to the grocery store and the TIP district.
Well, true, but I guess it doesn't really matter, because we voted on to give it to them for 10, 10 years.
Yeah, we're giving them $50,000 no matter what, but as long as that TIP district's in there, we'll never see any of that money anyway, at the 1%.
Eventually, it's going to get paid off, and it may be paid off for the... It's just a thought. Maybe we need to kind of see what, what all information we can share.
Okay, I didn't staple them, because I didn't know if that's our ones for you, or ones for me.
Did you have them signed?
No, they don't come in here with one. Did you want, I didn't know if you wanted...
You can drop it off at the office if they want to sign it later.
Okay. Do you need everyone's signature?
One person.
No.
It's usually the mayor.
There you go, Mr. Mayor.
It's a good thing we got you starting on the right foot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the knowledge from what the TIP district brings in, I think you could probably get on the computer and find it yourself if you want to know how much. No, because it's not going back to...
The biggest thing with that was the property tax above and beyond, I mean, with the improvements that were made, go back to paying the debt of the project. Sales tax stuff is probably public knowledge. I mean, it's reported every month.
Yeah, but see, they also get that 1% sales tax back to them direct to, through the TIP district. So it doesn't actually flow into our 1% sales tax.
And I was just curious, those numbers are, I think, a lot higher than we predicted.
They are not.
But that's from like year 2, right? That's ever since we started collecting.
Oh, 139,000?
That sales tax goes back against the money owed on that...
Back to the PMO, for less.
Yes, I believe so. I believe that's how all that, that TIP district works, is it all goes back towards that project that...
It's the debt of the project. That's all it can go towards.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was 39,000 above what was budgeted for, for reneccurting, collection.
And that's probably true.
Yeah, I could believe that.
Yeah, because we were just kind of in the air of what type of money the 1% sales tax is going to bring in.
The first payment we made was like, we had like a hundred, already collected a hundred twenty thousand or so.
Yeah.
You know, so then we've been collecting ever since that, which was six months ago, probably.
October.
Yeah.
I think is when that first payment was made last year.
Okay, unless there's any other discussion, we can move on. Moving on to department heads. Grant Administrator Lisa Cornwell. Did we heard anything from Lisa? No?
No. I talked to her about, um, looking into a few things, but I have not heard back with any answers.
Anybody got anything for Lisa for Jamie to pass on? Okay. Uh, police report?
Uh, everything's going really good. I turned Octavia loose on his own, so we are able to spoke the shifts now. So we'll cut down on my overtime a little bit. Uh, he's doing great. I think he's gonna make, make us a good officer. So it's the only thing I've got.
If I have any questions for Sergeant Elliott?
The issue with the truck is resolved?
Yes, issue with the truck is resolved. It was four quarts low on oil. So it has been resolved. We have got a plan in effect. I've got with Dave on the city crew. We're gonna start setting the trucks up for every three months or three thousand miles, oil changes. Uh, forgot with Octavia already. We're gonna start checking oil, equipment, everything at the beginning of the shift. So this don't happen again. So I've already got it all prepared out to.
Hold seven quarts, not three.
Anybody else have anything for Sergeant Elliott?
Nope.
Okay, moving on. Uh, fire chief?
I think the only thing is a city-county agreement.
Okay.
The county, you, um, do you want me to do it? Do you guys?
You've got the agreement. I hope you do.
Oh, it's in one of my files somewhere. We'll find it.
The only thing that was changed was the county attorney wanted to change the automatic renewal of the agreement. After the first twenty years, it goes to renewing every year instead of for an additional twenty years. So the agreement that you guys all had last meeting, the only difference is, is that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big deal.
It just automatically renews unless somebody opposes it. But instead of doing twenty year increments, after the first twenty years, it goes to year to year.
Year to year, okay.
I was waiting for a signature.
Okay, all right. So do I need, did I need a motion on this?
Yeah, to give you permission.
Okay, I'd like to see a motion to approve, uh, the training facility cooperative agreement for the St. John Fire Department. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries four oh.
Okay, well, we'll get started on it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mike? Okay, moving on. Let's see here. City clerk, Jamie. What you got?
Well. Pass that off.
I regret asking that.
Um, we are still looking for sponsors for Jubilee coming up. Our Easter egg hunt is also coming up and we are actually, um, we're gonna partner with WREC and we have decided to, um, do one Easter egg hunt this year and we're gonna do that the Saturday morning one. Um, Sandy and I have been in contact and we are going to, um, get that all figured out. So we'll start, um, advertising for that as soon as we get all of the details, um, out and hopefully that will, will be a, a beginning to a nice partnership with all the other stuff I got going on. Um, I got a phone call the other day and I was gonna print out the stuff. Basically someone called about special assessments on their taxes. He can't get out of his house. So I told him I would talk to you guys about it, but it's already, I think it was for mowing letters. They've been assessed. He says his property was mowed. Our guys say the property wasn't mowed. Um, I, I don't know if it was when I was here, it's, it's the same one I've been emailing you about for all that information.
If it's property that's going to tax sale because he's refusing to pay it, as far as I'm concerned, if he's not gonna pay it, then it can go to tax sale. When he goes to tax sale, if they sell it all, I'd be more than happy to relinquish assessments to the person that owns it after the tax sale, but not to an individual.
Do we have a tax sale? One there petition filed?
There's one coming up sometime.
Okay, I just told him I'd bring it up to you. He hasn't called in a couple of years, so.
Yeah, and I guess we probably ought to be talking about that, whether we wanna relinquish assessments.
Yeah, we always do and, and we probably don't do it properly. I don't remember us doing voting on a motion for it. I think it's just.
I think we did last time we did one.
I don't recall whether we did or didn't.
I think so. I think we did because we were interested in purchasing from land bank as well last time. A few of them. Sent somebody. We just need to make a motion to do that though, don't we? Just relinquish them on the day of tax sale.
Yeah, the.
To the new owners.
Yeah, I mean, as close to tax sale as possible because you don't wanna do it now and then.
Well, we can make a motion that on the day of the tax sale, a minute after it starts.
Whichever, whatever properties are sold at tax sale shall be free of city assessments.
To the new owner.
Have they announced the date for that yet?
I don't think they've set the date yet.
I thought they.
They had to publish it for several weeks and then.
Yeah.
So there's that. I guess we can visit that when it gets closer, hopefully.
Yeah, cause I would think.
I'd make it disappear once somebody else buys it.
Yeah.
I think.
Um, just a few other things I'm working on. Ashley and I are gonna be going to, um, a training to look at some opportunities, um, to try to find answers for Fifth Street and, um, even some housing opportunities to get started on some of that. I've reached out to the mayor over in Stafford. She's been working on a land bank for Stafford. And, um, with all of her research recently, I reached out and asked if she had kind of even just a general letter to send out to some of these property owners that have been vacant. And, um, she's, she's doing some checking for me so I don't reinvent the wheel and spend too much time on it with my awesome writing abilities. Is there?
Talking about first donations?
Basically.
I think we've done that before.
I know I talked about it, but.
We've done it on the dilapidated housing. I think they're talking some of these that people own that no longer live there and they don't rent them out.
Yeah, and usually, and I'd have to go back and review the statute, but I think the city can even go to the county commission and, and it's kinda controversial, but basically say the city land bank wants these houses. Can you take them out of tax sale? And if they don't get perked or paid off.
Could buy them from the tax sale as well though.
Does it have to do with?
You could, but you, you kinda get first dibs and so you avoid.
Well, see, I know how Stafford used to do it. Stafford used to go in and pay the back taxes that were owed prior to the sale in Stafford and they could own them.
They were counted.
But they were paying all the back taxes. So if there was four thousand dollars owed on it.
Let me look at that because I don't think that's even a requirement now. I mean, it, it's an agreement between you and the county. So the county's waiving the taxes just as if you guys are waiving the, the assessed fees. And sometimes some counties do that anyways. They're gonna start bids at a dollar instead of at the whatever's owed on the property.
Well, see, and I think all they do is thirty dollars is what they start them out here. Just enough to cover the sheriff's need.
The, the point being, you're not, so it's controversial in that you're gonna bid against your citizens that may want the property or you, or you wanna avoid.
Might be cheaper to just buy them at tax sales than any other foreclosure or anything else that we can do. Just put.
Yeah, yeah, if you can get them bought before they get at auction on sheriff sale.
Kinda what we thought about doing in the past is approaching those who are going to lose their property through tax sale and say, hey, look, we're not offering you accounting or legal advice, but you may get a tax benefit on your federal taxes by donating the property. And I don't know if we've ever had anybody bite on that at all.
I was just gonna send out a mass letter to like every vacant house in town, tax sale or not.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I'm thinking there's one already drafted. I mean, I just have to have lots of money. I can get you something out there.
Um, and I'll be signing up for the 2020 budget training. That's coming up here pretty quick, so we'll, we'll, uh, be doing that. I think that's it. Oh, no, I am starting classes tomorrow night. Um, it's a program between, uh, Pawnee County and Stafford County. It's Startup Central Kansas. There's, um, several of us from a few surrounding communities that are, it's a Wednesday night class. So it's a eight week thing, so we'll be getting that done and hoping we can continue to keep moving forward.
All right. Anybody have any other questions for Jamie?
I don't think so.
Moving on. City superintendent Jeff?
Just a couple of things at this time. One is, um, regular county cleanup week, April first to the sixth. As usual, the stuff will pick up, the stuff we won't. Anything that people have a question on, they call into the office. Basically the same as it has been the last few years. So nothing new about that. Um, the other thing is this is the five-year, the five-year anniversary of EPA compliance testing. We have to test for EPA to keep our generation rights. We'll do that. We have slated to do that on the twenty-second and twenty-third of May. Uh, we run each engine about three hours. We have to have a compliance officer come out when we do it. The cost to do that is up a little bit. I think it was ten thousand the last time. It's twelve, it's seventy-five hundred for the first engine. I think it's fifteen hundred for the second and third and then plus paperwork and that stuff. But, uh, we have to reply by this coming Friday to give the EPA sixty-day notice that we're gonna generate on that date. We can't be any later than the five-year term, which is the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of May. So we have to do it by the end of May in order to get. And I've got, uh, the same person lined up to do it as did it last time. You know, it's just, I mean, it's a have-to to keep your generation. So it's just kinda part of the game.
Something to do with emissions, Jett, or Jett?
Yeah, they check the emissions. She runs them for three hours. They fill out all the paperwork, which is like a, some of you remember an old Sears and Roebuck catalog. That's about what it's like, just to stay happy with the government. So anyway, that's really all I have at this point in time.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, we don't need to approve anything, do we?
Twelve thousand dollars.
Just a payer when we get done. And we don't have to do that tonight.
I mean, it doesn't keep you from signing that and telling them, getting it back to them. I mean, I.
That's up to you. I mean, if you wanna give me the approval to do it, so.
Well, yeah, it, we gotta do whatever needs to be. Is that a good price though?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, there's a lot of travel involved, you know, there's a lot of paperwork involved. And I mean, it's, there's a lot of equipment it takes to test those exhausts and, and it's fair. I mean, it's up a couple thousand from what it was five years ago. So, I mean, I don't think it's exorbitant. There's only two places in this part of the country that do it. So it's not like people stand in line to do this to deal with the EPA regulations, so.
Well, there are a way we can do it just to approve or just make the motion to approve and have it done.
See a contract?
All I have is an email right now. I'll get a contract, but I don't have it tonight. I have to, you know, all I have is, um, is a quote for what it costs. That's it.
I think you can give him permission to move forward with the required five-year EPA testing.
In a motion or just consensus?
It's just a quote. You know, it's what we got the last time. That's all it is.
Do it in a motion.
I'd make the motion to go ahead and approve Jeff to continue with the emissions. With the state or whoever.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No, sorry. Sanders and Christie. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries four oh.
Jeff, going back to Fifth Street, what's the deal with the rock that we made a motion to buy to finish off the west side?
Waiting on everything to get dry enough where we can pull it up. It's set in a pile. We have to pull it off.
Oh, you guys already bought the rock?
Oh, yeah, the rocks here. It's just that the ditch on, on that north side is so soft. Until the frost comes out of the ground, I have to think it's kinda a waste of time to do it. So we're kinda putting it off. This time of the year, the sun doesn't get up high enough to dry that out very well either. It's been pretty soggy. So as soon as, you know, as soon as it dries out enough, we can do it. We're gonna do it. We've got the material.
Have you done anything? Can I guess on West Street?
We have not touched it.
Nothing at all?
We haven't. We have not. Kinda the same notion. I mean, this time of year and as much moisture as we've had. And then that'll require a whole nother vote of how much rock you wanna put on it. So.
Yeah, it would just, it'd be good to get a plane going and then the house on West Second.
We have not touched it cause the fire department's still using it. When they're done, we'll tear it down. So.
You done with Mike?
No.
He wants to keep it as long as he can. It makes it a trade-in place, you know, and, and it's the wrong time of the year to do very much. So we couldn't get in there, I don't think, with a loader as soft as it is anyway.
We wanna train a couple more times then afford. It's been too cold to pump water or anything like that, so.
You only pump water when it's cold when you absolutely have to.
Unless you want it all around three words. That phrase is exactly right.
All right.
Is that, um, on the, on the West Street from Santa Fe to the highway, does that just need to be graded when it's wet? I mean, I've noted, I've had a few questions on, you know, why hadn't it been graded?
On West Street from Santa Fe.
Sorry, Fifth Street from Santa Fe to the highway.
We drug it a week ago, but before that it was froze.
Just after it rained? I mean.
We drug it a week ago last Friday. I mean, as soon as the freeze come off of it enough, we could drag it. But, you know, when it's froze a foot deep, it's kinda hard to deal with much. And we have drug it. It's, but it's gonna get hard now. There's so much rock in it that it's gonna be that way.
Well, yeah, you just, I mean, you know, just like all of us here do that. We got a window to, I don't know.
And sometimes it's pretty short.
It's something I'd like to have on the priority list with having that grocery store.
I'll tell, I'll tell David. We'll do it as often as we can. Sure.
My opinion, I make guys.
Sure. Do you have a scare fire on the front of your grid? We do. And we have scarified it a couple different times because it was so hard that we couldn't penetrate it. So.
Anything else? Okay. All right, moving on. Mayor's report. I have nothing. Nothing under new, old business.
Jumped over John.
Oh, sorry. John, so the attorney.
Okay, well, I wanted to lecture council tonight, but I don't know whether now is appropriate or we wait till we have a new council member. But there's an issue in the past and, and, and maybe the issue's taking care of itself, but, um, the executive session is created for a couple of purposes. And the, the main thing is some of the information discussed in executive session is private to the individual being discussed. Um, it may be private to the business that's being discussed. Um, and it, it's done specifically to protect certain public interests. And the Kansas Open Records Act and Kansas Open Meetings Act, how it's read and how it's interpreted is to err on the side of openness. And so when you create these exceptions to the Open Records Act and the Open Meetings Act, it's specifically designed to protect certain things, okay? That, um, uh, if that information. Okay, that, um, if that information would come out, would hurt the individual. And, and one of the things that keeps popping in my head is we've had a number of turnovers in the city. And if we're gonna talk about what happened in an executive session, it might hurt that person's ability to get a job later, whether that's done. And it may be unrelated to the reason for the person to even, or the person to become. The other thing is, you know, it has a dampening effect on, um, communications within those executive sessions. And it also has the ability to cause problems between employees, things that are discussed in those executive sessions. And kind of the thing that's most important to me is if it's something discussed attorney client. If one of the clients, uh, which is you guys, um, were to reveal what happened in that executive session, then it subjects me to discovery, which means I may be ordered to produce my emails, maybe ordered to talk about communications I had with my clients. Because the attorney client privilege is a privilege that can be waived by the client. Attorney can't waive that, by the way. So if the client waives that privilege, it pretty much opens the door to any kind of, um, information that may have happened in that, in that executive session to come out. And so I want to be kind of cognizant of that. Um, there's no hard and fast rule that says confidential information can't be divulged uh, if that happens in the executive session. There's no statute, no attorney general opinion, no rules. But if it does, then, um, we kind of need it aside. Maybe we don't have executive sessions. And so I just bring that up. I know it, and it was brought up once before in open meeting where somebody was being accused of violating, a city employee was being accused of violating, um, some kind of rule because information came out of an executive session. But, um, going forward, I think we just need to be extremely cognizant of that. Like I said, it is designed specifically for small issues that for whatever reason need to remain private because they're very, very private to those individuals or private to those companies. And as example, development and trade secrets are, um, uh, private to a business that may want to locate in St. John and need to be discussed in executive session because the, the business doesn't want to competitor to find out. And, um, it may have a chilling effect for any kind of development and that kind of thing coming to St. John. So I just wanted to share that information. Like I said, I was hesitant to do it tonight or whether it needed to be done. And maybe, maybe what I need to do is kind of put this in a memo, um, for new council member when we get to that point.
I still have it on my list to make the new, new hire or new, new council packet to teach, teach all of my fun new council members the ins and outs of their new.
That was when Marshall came on the council and we were concerned about.
Yes.
Or when was it?
I think it might have been Jim. Just kidding.
I'll take the.
Yeah, well, I think basically what he's saying is that whatever happens in an executive session, it stays in an executive session. And if it's being talked about in public, you know, it makes everybody else nervous about going into an executive session. If you can't handle that, then.
If we can't have free and open discussion between us ourselves and executive session without having the fear of it revealed as soon as somebody walks out that door, which I can think of three times, we've had executive sessions. And that message was revealed before we got out of the building. And we've had some dog and pony shows over at the library because of messages that were revealed when we were talking to outside people and that personnel were addressed and he did not wish that out. And it was taken right out of executive session, right out the door, and it didn't take five minutes. And we can't have free and open discussion and make decisions if it goes right out the door.
Well, what it, what it may be.
This would have to be a personnel issue, but because it involved a department head, it went to a dog and pony show.
It may get to the point where I have to protect the information I share with council in order to protect council. It is, is kind of the issue.
So basically you would be shady to not telling us what we need to know.
I'm gonna sound a lot more like an attorney.
But basically not telling us what we need to know in fear that it may leave.
Right.
I would rather know than.
I would too.
Yeah, basically, yeah. It's talked about in executive session for a reason. If you can't handle it, hit the door.
I agree.
Like I said, it may, it may take care of itself. I don't know.
Any questions for John?
What else you got? Is that all you got for us or?
Other than the, uh, the ordinance is, which one of them is just intended to leave bill of getting yelled at by people.
Oh. You mean the, uh, 106219?
Yeah.
I don't know how to be any more clear at this point.
So what were the issues? Because it wasn't listed out specifically of what could go in there?
You've got an illegal dumping statute, the ordinance applies to public property, which was intended when it was drafted to apply to the city dump. And then you've got a hazardous materials ordinance that says anything can be considered hazardous material. And I'm paraphrasing here, if, if it causes problems for city employees or contractors that have to pick up that stuff. And so to me, if, if they're having to fish stuff out or, you know, or remove tires, remove stuff that may not be considered hazardous per se, but is certainly causing, uh, problems for the city, uh, because they're in there. And so this just clarifies that if the sign is supposed to, or we adopt a regulation that says you can't throw stuff in that dumpster, then, and you do, then it's considered illegal dumping. It just kind of puts the two different penalty sections we have now.
Into one to one.
And I just want to warn everyone, everyone is getting a ticket.
You're getting caught.
If I have them on, if we have them on camera, they're getting a ticket.
Good.
How, that's how I took it as when all this was coming back. So I'm just letting you guys know Bill is doing his job.
They gotta learn somehow.
The camera issue is good, Jeff. Good go.
Yes, it is.
It's doing great. It's fine to.
We even scooted the dumpster a little today to make her a little better. So, yeah.
Sign looks pretty straightforward.
Oh, we're getting an even better one.
And as, as far as like the, the cereal malt beverage, when that is just basically adapting to what the changes kind of.
The last time, six months ago, whenever we looked at alcohol, I said, you know, it's my understanding they're gonna stop making three two beer. And the state is recognized that. So basically if you have the authority to sell three two beer, you're now gonna be able to sell. And I don't, I did not create the language. I would not have used the word enhanced cereal malt beverage. Because that makes me one think about the minerals that they put in my bottled water. That's enhanced bottled water. But, um, the, uh, so I just, for simplicity's sake, because it was like four pages long. I just used what the league had already drafted. And I added our changes in there that we have adopted previously with regard to Sunday sales and, and temporary permits and that kind of thing. Just, so I had to go through it, but I just used their term. But anybody now can be, convenience stores, anybody that saw on three two is, is now gonna have as of April 1, the authority to sell strong beers.
So we just need to approve both ordinances?
Right. They're, they're, like I said, it's, it's mostly a definition thing on the cereal malt beverage.
Right. Jamie, are these right numbers?
They are.
Okay.
Look at me.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 106119 on the cereal malt beverage.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four oh.
And I'd make a motion to accept ordinance number 106219 on the prohibiting disposal of certain items in city dumpsters.
Second.
I'm reading what it says.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four oh.
I'd like a motion to publish the CMB ordinance by summary so that you don't have to pay to print all of it in the paper. We, we would just print the summary.
The summaries? You want a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries four oh. Is that it, John?
That is it.
Okay, any other questions for, uh, John? Okay, we don't have anything, uh, under old business, uh, new business.
You guys are going too fast.
We've got a lot left to accomplish.
Okay, so we kind of got into it when Danielle was here. Basically, you can slap my hand because I made these without prior approval, but I was just fixing the funds. So what was in your guys' packet is the transfer to and from to fix the police department vehicle that we thought was wrong that wasn't wrong. And then everything that has been held back in the police department, the fire department, and streets that has been in the capital outlay, I think is, is what they call it on the budget. But then it's capital improvement in the actual fund. But pool is, is still sitting in Fund 50. So Pam and I created line items in Fund 61 to show, um, the totals and kind of keep them separate like we had been in Fund 50. So basically all that's happening is the, the fix of the police car. That total is taken out of what the police department show, like, we just kind of made up for it in Fund 61. And then, um, the totals for each other department. Cause I got.
That's what this one is showing, how much is actually in the.
That is basically just the debit, yeah.
That's what's left in, in the police departments.
The totals under here are just like the debit and credit totals. Um, to get you the actual total of the police department fund, I'd have to look at that. This is just showing the debits and credits.
This is just.
Moves.
Just the moves. Okay.
So.
But each one of these 50 accounts is a special one for the police or the fire or?
Yeah, and, and they're still gonna be there, um, if for some reason we want to do capital improvements. Um, but it is my understanding that that money is being saved for vehicles. Um, I think I talked to you, I tried calling Mike, and then I had talked to Jeff about the street department. So we just moved that over to be able to, to actually purchase vehicles or equipment, um, if needed since.
Instead of a going towards capital outlay.
Fund 50, you can't, you can't do that. So we fixed it and we're ready to, ready to go forward. But that's all that is. Um, I have this copy. I'll have you guys sign that just, just to have it signed. I actually have everything in the safe that you guys have to sign, so don't hurry too far or after the meeting. So that's basically just that. So I just made a motion, um, accepting these transfers.
I'd make a motion to accept the transfers and general entries.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four oh.
The next one's Jeff.
Jeff?
Jeff?
Diesel fuel.
I, uh, called around today and got some prices on fuel. We're down to six inches in the west tank, which is a summer tank. So this is non-taxable fuel for the power plant, for the street department, both. And the cost in the morning when the market opens will be $2.18 delivered. So I'm gonna take a third of it out of the street department. They did not help pay for the last load we bought. We took it strictly out of the power plant, but we'll take a third out of there, two thirds out of the power plant. So.
How much you wanting to buy?
Transport load, 8,500 or somewhere where, whatever they bring weight wise, you know, I don't know what it is anymore. Think it depends on whether the trooper's on the highway or not. Some days it could be 8,500, other days it might be 8,000. But I'm not sure, you know, whatever the load is. So.
It's 218?
218. Yeah. True source, yeah. I can get it either from Hamples or from Great Bend Co-op. They're both the same price. Freight's the same. I mean, it's the last time we bought from Hamples. I thought I'd buy from the co-op. This time we use a trade off. So.
I don't care where we buy it, as long as we're getting the best deal.
I need to know where we're buying it from so I can record it and not get in trouble from all the vendors.
Probably Great Bend Co-op, I imagine.
Great Bend Co-op?
Yeah.
Do you get a dividend from it then?
No, but they both pay taxes here in the county and here in the city both because they have propane tanks out here. And we have Hamples out here, so we try and trade back and forth. So.
Great Bend Co-op?
Yes. They own the propane tanks out here.
Oh.
So.
Boy, I had one question, like where are we getting our gas right now? Like when we fill up, cop, city trucks, where are we filling them up at?
They buy, they buy two different places. We only, we only buy at the shortstop because we have an account out there. You know, I mean, it's just whatever.
I know the school made a deal where they were splitting it between the grocery store and Kansas Co-op. I'd like to see something like maybe if we started buying something like.
We would do that if we had a charge account, sure. We used to do it all the time.
I'd like to split it between the two.
Yeah.
Well, Kansas pays a 2%, if you have a card, pays a two cent dividend.
They pay a two cent dividend on our cards, yes.
Yes, and then you get a dividend at the end of the year. So.
It's like sometimes 15 cents.
Yeah. So the co-op would be considerably sort of cheaper probably for us, but.
I mean, whatever the price is, it stays the same on both sides of the highway. It's not like it's a big profit deal for anybody, you know?
The posted price stays the same, but you're.
Do they do a charge account out of heights?
We have a charge account, like.
With their groceries. But ours would amount to several thousand dollars with the fuel, you know? I don't know whether they'd want to do that or not.
But you're, if they don't, you're gonna have to put it on a credit card.
Yeah, and we don't have that much room not for me to supply all the drugs.
That's what I'm saying is if you're buying it and having to put it on a credit card.
And as Jim says, we get a two cent discount for using our cards too.
I mean, I'm not opposed to buying it at both places or whatever, but.
Well, I might just, I might check with Josh and ask him how they're doing it and see if I can go out there and talk to him.
I can go out to the grocery store and, and find out.
You want to check it out then and talk to Josh? I just think it'd be nice to support both.
She bought a Kansas card, right?
Yeah, I have two of them. I have three of them between my departments.
The city departments have them, which makes it easy for them to fill up. They can swipe it and get a receipt.
And then you get the co-op dividend at the end of the year, right?
Yes, I think so.
He should talk to Josh Meyer.
I just want to buy some diesel fuel.
And I'm pretty sure I read in the minutes.
The co-op, if you buy it in.
The school.
You don't.
Okay, if there's no more discussion on, uh.
If you buy 3,000 gallon.
Where were you saying Great Bend Co-op for the diesel fuel?
Yeah.
218 a gallon, right?
218.
But they're the same price as Ample. I just seen that Ample's, I characteristically local, their office is here.
Ample, we paid this.
They got a building here and they buy electricity offices.
Great Bend Co-op has, pays taxes here in town too. I mean, I'll do whatever you want. Makes me no difference.
I'd like Ample down here.
Well, I don't care where we buy it from, as long as it's 218 a gallon.
I mean, if you guys want to call it in, buy it, you do it. I'll stay out of it. I don't care. Makes no difference.
I don't care.
I'd like here. I'd make a motion to buy here Ample at 218 a gallon. I'd like here, I'd make a motion to buy it here at Hampel at 2.18 a gallon.
That's not me.
2.18?
Yeah.
I just looked it out way too many times in the minutes.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those against?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
That's what I'll do.
Motion carries three oh.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
No. I bought a lot of fuel there.
All right. Okay, got any other things for Jamie?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I can't wait.
Moving on to executive sessions. Have an executive session to discuss attorney-client privilege. Councilmember, Councilman Amasia, so how much time do you need?
We'll do seven minutes.
Seven minutes.
To include mayor, council, this guy, this girl.
Okay, do I have a second?
Time will come back in.
Yeah. For seven minutes, you have 18 after, 8:18 we will resume.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries four oh. Call a regular council meeting back to order.
I would make a motion to recall Bob Mercer's appointment to the Rec Commission Board effective immediately.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four oh.
I would then make a motion to appoint Burke Long to the Rec Board Commission effective immediately.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four oh. Sergeant Elliott, you have an executive session right here? Or, excuse me, sorry, Jamie, sorry.
Thank you. You can call me Sergeant Jamie.
Sergeant Jamie? I thought you wanted General. Okay, how much time do you need?
Um...
Eight minutes.
Really? He's just making fun of me now.
Eight minutes and 25 seconds.
Ain't doing that.
Okay, so this is a non-elected personnel to discuss police chief applications, correct?
Yes.
How long? Eight minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
To include?
Um, all of us and Bill.
So moved.
Second.
Let's go.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? 8:28. Call meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to go back into executive session to discuss police chief application for another five minutes to include the same people.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries four oh. Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Um, Tom?
Thirty-four.
Yeah.
How many minutes are you going to be buying?
Call the meeting back to order.
I would make a motion to amend the agenda to add a, how long do you guys think? Five?
Ten.
Ten minutes.
I'd say ten.
Executive session, non-elected personnel to conduct a police department interview to include council, mayor, attorney, HR, Bill, and Alan Adams.
Second.
Yeah, Bill and Alan.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Motion carries four oh. We will resume meeting at 8:45. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to return to executive session to discuss the police chief application to...
Same thing under the interview.
Same thing under the interview for five minutes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries four oh. We will resume at 51 after. Call council meeting back to order.
I would make a motion to hire Alan Adams as the St. John Police Chief at the wage of $50,000 a year effective immediately.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm putting Doran as the second on the board, so you know.
She's got a whole offender like it.
Okay, with that being concluded, any more business?
Yeah, you still got the land bank.
Oh, I forgot about that.
I got a, I wanted to make amendment. I know it's a bad time, but I really would like to talk about it.
About what?
About...
The land bank?
No.
Oh.
No, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda for four minutes for employee performance.
Non-elected personnel, employee performance.
Oh, my gosh. I'm going to have to send you my minutes to...
I mean, I'd like to discuss it tonight.
So moved. Or second, or whatever. Who are you wanting in here?
Just mayor, council, and attorney.
Mayor, council, and attorney.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
Making your money tonight, aren't you?
How much was it, four minutes? 56 after.
You better go 57.
57 after. Call this meeting back to order.
Aren't you?
Okay, let's see. Okay, land bank. We need to recess out of this meeting and go into the land bank. So I, right now, I am recessing this regular meeting of city council to go into land...
With no action being taken from your executive session?
Yes, with no action being taken in our executive session, so... Thank you, Jamie.
No.
Who is the...
That would be me.
Here you go, sir.
That's way too much power for you.
I actually prefer a bigger hammer, mallet or whatever. Call land bank meeting to order. We have a 10-minute executive, actually, let's just take this back down to about five-minute executive session. Um...
For what?
Would be of a property acquisition, so...
To include?
To include council, mayor, attorney, and some clerk. Five minutes.
It's not called property acquisition, it's called real estate purchase negotiation.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Real estate.
That's number three bullet point on that, isn't it?
I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's four.
Return 9:06?
9:07.
Is there any...
Call land bank meeting back to order. If there's no other business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the land bank.
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor? All opposed? Carries three, four, I don't know, do I vote on them?
You're chairman, you can't vote.
Yeah, four, one.
All right. Call a regular meeting of city council back to order. Having finished that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries...
I love this.
Four oh. Meeting adjourned.